I always have a pen. Okay? Well, we'll wait another thirty seconds just for good measure.
Just to get a job to put things down.
Chris is on the line.
Chris is on the line.
Chris is.
Mm-hmm.
I thought the, the one thing that I thought was hard to pull was the, you know, his stuff. And then we had the citizens. And it didn't have a single quote from anybody else.
We got more people coming.
And it made it seem like we were like, yeah, do whatever you guys want. It's like, no, that's like the opposite of what I got out of that meeting. I mean, that's, that's me.
You'd think a dollar store was coming to town.
It was actually twice as many people there that day.
Yeah.
I know, I came, I was standing, Kenny in the doorway.
Ten seconds.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call will show that we have no Kennedy, but everybody else is here. And is everybody getting enough chairs? We can always find more chairs. And there's also copies of the agenda right here on the edge of the table if anybody would like a copy of that. So, we received a request from Mr. Greshick to, to have an agenda item for a discussion about the North House lease, which we do have. We have information that North House has provided us for that discussion, but to make sure that we have an opportunity for everybody to say what they want to say in regards to this conversation, which I'm assuming most of you have shown up for, I would like to do very similarly to what we did with the, with the conversation earlier in the year about the golf course and, and open the public forum beyond what the normal standards are for that, so that people have the ability to say what they, what they would like to say. So, with that said, we'll continue in an orderly fashion of having people come up and, and say what they, what they have, what they have to say. I would encourage you to, to, to keep it concise, so to speak, because there are quite a few people here, as well as to, if you, if you agree with someone else, what someone else has said, then, you know, state that in order to kind of keep things moving along so we don't have the same thing coming out twenty-some times or something like that. Hope that, hope that makes sense or works for people. So, that's a conversation, that's, that's how I'm proposing to do it. I don't know if the council has any other ideas about, about other ways to proceed with that, because I do believe we have two different conversations that we're talking about here. One of the conversations is, what does the community feel about this, this arrangement and this relationship? And then another conversation is, is the conversation about potential solutions that North House has put together to meet some of the criteria that, that have been talked about in the past. So, if that sounds, if that sounds good to the council, then, then we can continue like that. So, so with that said, we'll open, open the open forum or the public forum. If anyone comes forward to talk, I would encourage you to, to identify yourself so that we can have that on the record, and then, and then proceed with what you want to say. So, it's open.
Carl Greshick, I go by Pete. I'm a lifetime resident of Grand Marais. I had sixteen pages written up last night, and when I read it after work, it sounded like a campaign ad, so I scrapped it. Just gonna write some notes here, my main concerns. First, I want to reiterate, the North House is a great asset to the community. There's nobody questioning that. They've done a great job. Greg Wright amazes me with his foresight, his visions. In fact, I wish he was negotiating the contract on the city side. I think we'd have a better result. But one part I want to add, I think the North House has even done better than they even imagined they would do when they first started this. But I feel a big part of their success is their location on city property. They are on prime property in the coolest town in America. And you take the Java Moose and move them off the lake, see how they would do. Take the Angry Trout Cafe, move them up to Tom Devota, see how their business would prosper. So, a big part of the North House's success is where they are. Now, I want to ask any of the council people, do you know the value of the property that they're on, the city property?
It's about a million.
It's nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
The assessed, the assessed value.
The assessed value for taxes purpose is thirty thousand dollars. Now, I'm just, I'm not saying that this is what should happen, I'm just trying to say the value of that property. I checked with the city rec park. They could expand ten to twelve prime sites in that location. That would generate seventy-five to ninety-five thousand dollars for the city of Grand Marais. And it would bring in forty-eight hundred campers for the season. That's just for some comparisons. Now, I don't say that I think that that's what, it should happen to the property, it's not. I think the North House should stay there, and I hope that we can work something out that would be fair for everybody. Now, the North House has been so successful, they've had a few expansions. The Echo property, the current value, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Tax value, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. The Hakes property, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand, five hundred in taxes. They do pay a portion of the building that they rent out of fifty-eight hundred dollars. So, between the three properties, the city is losing out on sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars worth of tax base to start. And that's not just the city, the county, that's the tax base. And now we're getting to the third expansion, and this is a part that really threw up a red flag. In fact, I came and talked with Mike Roth three months ago about the taxpayers of Grand Marais are starting to struggle. It's getting very tough, and with all the services we provide, I was looking for some relief, some way that our visitors could help pay the burden of this small community is expected to, to pay. So, when, when the North House paid one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a property that was assessed at four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, that really got me thinking. They must have some pretty good resources to come up with that kind of money to buy a property that's valued at that. So, just before the meeting, I'm going to add, add this, Ron Lund called me. In the original agreement, back when he started, I, they didn't have a copy, it was fifteen hundred dollars a month, or eighteen thousand a year. They currently pay around four hundred dollars a month, plus they require to do six hundred in improvements, which doesn't do anything for the city. That's improvements for them, is the way I see it. So, I didn't really want to add this, but I think I will. I pay more in my property taxes than the North House is paying out in their cash lease for that property. And, and that's troublesome to me. So, I hope that when you negotiate, you can see the value. And I want to say, the North House didn't make Grand Marais, Grand Marais made the North House. And I think it's time that the taxpayers get reimbursed for the use of that property. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Pete. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Barb Levine. My husband and I own the Angry Trout Cafe, right next door to North House. And I don't know, you know, the figures that Pete was expressing. I do know that we've been there for thirty-some years, and yes, Grand Marais made North House, but North House, boy, you know, we used, didn't used to have any business in June. They have helped our business, and of course, we're right next door to them immensely, and made our property value go up. I'm paying more taxes, I think, because the North House has made it a, a popular place to be, which is fine. And I also think, you know, and I know Pete would agree with me, but I just think it bears saying that any small town in Minnesota would, would kill to have a, a organization like North House in their town, and I think everybody agrees that, you know, that's probably true. But I think they have, they have put people, what I like about North House is they've been the only thing that's ever been here in my thirty-five years of being here, that's ever gotten people here in February and March and November, and those are, they're putting people in beds those times of the year. The campground, you know, it's a great thing, but they're not getting people here in February and March and November. And it's, it's really been the only thing, and the Tourism Bureau, everybody's tried to do things to get people here in those off-seasons, and it's never worked, and North House has. So, and I don't think Pete and I disagree, I think, you know, he agrees that, that North House is a big asset, I do too, and I, I think we have to kind of qualify that, yes, they're not paying this in taxes, but what are they bringing in? What businesses are they supporting? And how many people, how many jobs have they created since they've been here? So, you kind of got to take all that into account as well.
Yeah, thanks, Barb.
Thanks, Barb. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
I'll give him my time.
Well, I'm sure that lots of people would, yeah. I, I think that's, as, as long as you keep it concise, I think that's fine, because I, what, the, the point, the point of the open forum is for people to, to, to speak to the council and not to one another, you know? Because if you want to do it to somebody else, you can do it later.
I forgot to add this. I'm not saying that they don't help the businesses in town, I'm talking about the taxpayers of Grand Marais. And by the time that money gets filtered down to the taxpayers, they're not seeing a big relief in their taxes from the North House helping the businesses. I'm not here saying that it doesn't help the businesses, I'm here for the taxpayers.
Okay. Coming on up.
My name's Bob Mattson, and I, I agree with what's been said pretty much so far, is that the North House is an asset. And I think back to the days that, when you think back, the North House is obviously doing something very well, because the town of Ely had to emulate what they did. And in the past, the city let the town of Ely beat them out of a wolf center and a bear center, but at least we bit them, we beat them in the folkhouse. But I'll have to give Mr. Wright credit, he's doing a very good job for his program, whereas the city council, I think, has been remiss in their obligation to the taxpayers. You've got to balance things out the best you can fairly, without penalizing North House, but they do have to come forward and pay their fair share. And that's the big question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Come on up. You gotta step up to the mic, Fred.
Baseball player. I, I, some great things have been said here, you know, and I was real surprised to find out that the, the lease is currently four hundred bucks a month. Now, is that accurate?
Do you have the exact number?
Three sixty-three.
Three sixty-two and sixty-five cents.
Three, pardon?
Three hundred and sixty-two and sixty-five cents.
Oh, okay. So, that's, and so, am I correct in assuming then that that's quite a bit less than the original amount that was agreed on back in the nineties?
No.
When it was fifteen hundred a year?
That's when it got set.
That's, that's in line with what the original agreement was?
So, we're, we're still operating under the original agreement?
Which is why we're talking about renewing the agreement.
Because I sat in those very chambers back then, and was part of a presentation team when the city council called for, what can we do with those Forest Service buildings? And, and I was a board member of the Art Colony at that time, and was part of the team that made a presentation to the city council. Mark Hanson made his presentation to the city council with the North House idea. The idea, if I remember correctly, of a lease was discussed at that time, or shortly thereafter, at maybe some other meeting I attended on the issue. It was my understanding that North House was asking, I'll use the term north, North House, because I think we can all relate to it, rather than throwing names out there, individuals. And that, can you make the lease manageable so that we can, we have an idea, and we want to see this idea grow and come into fruition, but if we're encumbered economically, this may be difficult to do, because they knew they were going to have to apply for grants and, and, and get people to come in and, and do brochures and all this advertising and stuff like that. So, it was just a pie in the sky idea that turned out to be a great idea. So, and the idea of, and maybe we would renegotiate a lease deal if we are successful. Okay? When, okay? And so, I, I really feel that seeing the improvement and seeing the actual, and I feel there's many hidden costs, and we can all wrap our things around this in the trickle-down theory of businesses, neighboring business doing better and all this stuff, but what about our service industry and our policemen and, and the things that are going on that where you're paying, maybe the county's paying policemen overtime to manage these events that happen in these days? These things need to be formulated into this idea, into this lease agreement scenario as well. And I just wonder if the council has taken some time to really figure out the benefit. I mean, we can all throw things out there and say, oh, this is great trickle-down theory and blah, 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 you know, and all this, and, you know, but, but has it been analyzed? By, I hate to say this, and I think vocally, the study could be done. Or you can cough up fifty grand and have some consultants come in and do a study, and that they are may not prove anything, which is a sad situation, you know? But, but when things, terms get thrown around like this, it's like, yeah, but where are the facts? I mean, the only facts that I, I've heard so far is, is Pete's saying what the taxes are and what the taxes are not being collected if those properties still had remained private. Okay? And, and his, his numbers are real accurate. I got, I went to the courthouse today and got mine, and they're, they match up with his, basically. You know, there's gray area in here. So, having said that, I mean, we're missing out on forty to sixty thousand dollars in real estate taxes. That those former properties that are now under the umbrella of a nonprofit would be paying. Okay? Great. Now, does that offset the Angry Trout business? Or does that offset Ben, Ben Franklin, or the Gunflint Tavern, or the gas stations? In the roundabout way that all the taxes are brought in through the different municipal taxes and income taxes and state taxes and gas taxes and blah, 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 it goes on. There's a lot, we pay a lot of money in taxes, you know? And this is where I, I'd say, let's, let's just, on, on the surface, it looks like they're doing pretty darn well. If they can obtain grants and obtain money and build out and buy pieces of property. So, I really think it is unfair to the taxpayers, the city, the taxpayers of, of the city of Grand Marais. And we're not all involved in the, the scenario of tourism and eating out and North House and these things that are, make this a tourist town. We're not all directly involved in that. So, I, I really think it's time to figure out something, because I want them, their ideas, you couldn't beat it, number one. I mean, it's, it was great, and, and it should stay there. But, so I hope the council takes, and, and. Yeah, I mean, to work together on this thing, to find a real workable situation so that we can all support it, because it, it will work better in the long term to have the people here that are having a hard time with the city council justifying what they are charging currently for a lease on that thing. You know, you're going to create some enemies. And, and why? Economically, we can probably work this out. And, and so I just feel that, hope that everybody would just be basically honest on this thing and say, hey, it's good for some, but it's not good for everybody. And let's, let's really hold on to that idea, because it, it's, it really isn't, you know? I mean, and I, I've been in a government position before, and, and as a county commissioner, I can see how you start flowing into this government job you have, and everything's government, 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 we're right, we're right, we're right. And you lose touch with the people. And it's so easy to lose touch with the people. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Is there anybody else? Come on up. We got a couple people working their way up, so. Should go first.
I'm Jim Vannett. I'm not a resident of Grand Marais. I'm a Cook County taxpayer. And there's, there's a few things that I do not understand about this whole lease program. Number one, where you're looking at a fifty-year lease, I can't figure out who in the heck would ever sign a twenty-five-year lease. It just is, it's not done. You just don't do it. Out west, they used to do it. They'd get a bunch of natives drunk, give them a buck an acre for ninety-nine years of their land. And because of that, nobody goes long-term leases because of the changing economy. So, adding more to a lease that already is in the red from day one is pretty wrong. And the reason I say the red, I, I do the numbers, and what I'm trying to figure out is that, no, we don't want to charge too much for the full school. I mean, I, I can understand that, but there's got to be some balance in it, too. And there's no balance where three hundred and sixty-two bucks, well, heck, I'll give you four hundred bucks, you know, a month for that place. Now, would I get a lease? No. So, extending this lease as it is, per se, would be ridiculous. The numbers aren't there, you don't have any numbers to justify that. Secondly, I look at it this way. If you look at the League of Minnesota Cities and their memo, as far as anything you do, right in the beginning, it states that you ensure, ensure the integrity in government, and then it says, protect the city's and/or the city residents' interest. Is this your best interest? Because if we're losing forty-five thousand dollars in tax money, and we don't get the decent amount of money for the lease, no, that's backwards. You're not in the interest of the people of this town. The only reason I came tonight is the simple fact that any of the businesses in town here, if your taxes go up, then you leave your prices at the same level, right? No, prices go up. So, as soon as they have to pay more just because the taxation is hurting their bottom line, I get to pay more when I come to town, which makes Canada look a lot better all the time, especially with thirty cents on the dollar now. So, to protect the integrity of a lot of the businesses for the people of Cook County and Grand Marais, we're still not looking at their best interest. So, I, I really, I think that there should be a fair and equitable payment made. If you want to change the lease, don't make it any longer. I'd make it shorter, because you have no leverage on a long-term lease, zero. Your leverage is gone, and that's not in the best interest of the public in this city or in the county of Cook. So.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Carol Backland, and I might be saying the same thing that the gentleman just said, but I am worried about the long-term lease, and I can't believe that at the current lease, at three hundred and sixty-five dollars, there was no, there was no thinking of how things are being inflated in the future. I mean, if anybody could stay at the same rate at three hundred and sixty-five a month, knowing ten years from now, it's, it's incredible that it wasn't increased in increments, even if it's a percentage, like, okay, if you're going to lease it for ten years, the, the first year would be, let's say, five hundred a month. No, I'm not saying that, it could be ten million a month. But then, then each year, it should be increased according to different variables like cost of living, what the community is paying in taxes. It should be increased every single year, and I agree with not a long-term lease, although I know that it's nice for them, for their projects, that they want to expand, that's nice for them. But your concern should be with the citizens here, in the city, and of course, in the county, but we're getting hit with city taxes as well as county taxes. And a lot of retirees and people that are going to be retiring can't afford these heavy taxes increasing every year, while a successful business doesn't get any increases at all. So, my thought is, if you sign a lease, make it a shorter term with increases each and every year. And my other concern is, now, Dog Side was purchased, and I know they're paying a portion, like for the restaurant, which is eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, but I think when Harley had it, it was close to twenty thousand, because it was all commercial. But I know that there, I've been told that Mr. Wright and North House are going to use, I think, part of that as their, part of their, you know, their nonprofit. And so that's why they're only charged on the restaurant. But what is to say that they decide to turn that restaurant into something else? So then, all of those taxes will no longer be there. And that's my concern, that every, the property that they're, they're picking up, they're going to use it eventually for their own purposes, and which is understandable, you know? But they're all coming off the tax rolls. And that's a big deal with the city our size and the population of our size. And I agree with everything that's been said, it's a great business, but I do have to look after our citizens, too. And the money that the businesses, the other businesses are making, that doesn't get down to me, it doesn't get down to my neighbor. We are paying more to cover the cost of all the property that comes off the tax rolls. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Does anybody else have anything?
My name is David Williams, and I own Bear Track Outfitting Company. Now, I've watched North House from the beginning, and it's been a really interesting program to watch. They've done wonderful things. I've been a contributor to their, to their programs many times. I was an instructor. But I just want to know, I just want to let you know that as a tax-paying business in this county, it did affect our business. We ran clinics, guiding, and instruction of fly fishing for many years. Well, then the North House started it, and most of our guides that worked for us went to North House. So, this ended our business. So, you know, you can say it hasn't affected businesses, but it did affect us, you know, in a small way. So, it's just a little bit of interest or information that I wanted you to know about. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So, just, just to be clear, so when we, when we close the open forum, then we're going to invite the North House folks to come forward and present the information that they've, that they've put together. So, we have, we've already heard quite a few, quite a few ideas, quite a few concerns, and I've been taking notes on those, and those are things that, that we will, that we will definitely weigh in to any conversation on, on, on a lease arrangement. Tonight, we're not expecting to make any decisions. Tonight, we're not expecting to make any decisions on the lease itself. We've put, we put a request out there for more information at the previous meeting. North House is obliged, and we'll be presenting that at this meeting. So when we have that conversation, when they come forward and start talking about their, their information, then that's a conversation between North House and the council. So then the expectation would be that there would not be any more interjections, which is, I would, I would really appreciate it if you had something to say, if you came forward and said it now, so that you can be heard and that we can, we can move along in the conversation and have that be a productive conversation. So, so.
I guess I have one thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
Diane Greeley. And one of the things I would like to request is that maybe, it's been great that you guys stepped up and filled in the intern, but could we wait on this until we have a voted-in Until November, when we have the voted-in people that the county wants, or the city people want, to be on your panel? Before you make a decision on the North House?
Yeah.
There's nothing, there's nothing that says that we have to make a decision. Honestly, I'm sure Greg's thinking, why did they bring this forward? Because we could be sitting on the lease till 25 years.
Yeah.
We would still follow the contract rules with them for 25 years.
Which would keep the rate at $362 a month for the next 25 years.
Well, it would increase.
It would increase. There's a.
Per the contract.
Per the contract. But the part of, I mean, I know that, well, whatever, we can talk about it in our conversation.
We'll talk about that.
What did the language say that it would increase to?
There's, there's a mathematical calculation that we do that we follow in here.
So just give me an approximation.
It's.
Yeah.
Two percent a year.
Two percent a year on what we have.
Two percent.
So, and again, I understand people's disappointment. What you have to understand, and we're hearing you, and that's what we're here to do on my behalf, I'm here to listen to what you say. The other thing I'm going to say is, I hear what you're saying, we have to figure it out. I know that's our job. But my job is to come back and ask you, what are your thoughts? What you're sharing here, but as you talk about valuation, my cell phone number's on the site, I'm going to call Kim tomorrow, I'd prefer it in email. If you have serious thoughts or solutions as to how you might work this, I'm interested in hearing them. Because myself alone, to figure out something, is probably not going to do it in a way that would make maybe anybody happy, or maybe everybody be happy. I don't know. That's why you go back, and I've learned in leadership, the more ideas and thoughts that are respectful and responsible are going to make for better solutions. I was taught that if you're going to bring a problem forward to anyone, my supervisor, my dad, anyone, teenager can do it the best, right? Because you usually have a solution to your problem. Hey, Dad, if you let me borrow the car Saturday night, I will. So that's what I'm asking, not just to the people here, the people who watch this and citizens, if you have thoughts about how this should be done, by all means, share it. Because we don't have to go forward and change anything in the lease tomorrow, next week, next month, or before the next council sits here. It could stay in place. I don't think that's been discussed. I missed the last meeting, and I sat at home and watched it so that I knew what my co-counselors said and made choices to do. And nobody's promised North House a new lease. So I would really like to hear from people as to maybe what your thoughts are in helping me to come up with a good solution. So I'm going to put that back on the citizens, not that it's your problem to figure out, that's why I'm here, but help me figure it out. Help us, it's not just me, help us then figure it out so that we can have that good conversation with North House. One thing that I will say, and we go forward, is I've lived here all my life as well. I remember what the streets of Grand Marais used to do. Come October 1st, when the fall colors were done, the streets of Grand Marais rolled up, you could lay in the middle of Highway 61 and not get run over, basically, unless it was a Muncin truck. Until about the 4th of July, the campground used to get busier because the 15th of June was when our seasonals would come in for the summer. After the 4th of July, and most people would tell you Fisherman's Picnic would be over, and everybody'd go home that Sunday. Technically, the first week after Fisherman's there was the busiest week of the year. The numbers that they're bringing in, I've, I've never looked at North House, I've never taken a class, I used to think, wow, yeah, they got a heck of a deal, until I sat down and looked at numbers. I'm a finance person. There's no denying the number of people they bring into our county. Now, does it save the taxpayer, and do my tax dollars change because of it? They don't. But here's the thing I know, if we don't have people living and working in our community year-round, and I have been based in two businesses my whole life here, that are based upon the fact that we have to have people here in our community, we don't have community. The hospital goes away, we don't have community. The school goes away, we don't have community. So if there's people here in February, and there's people here in March, and they want to stay in a hotel, and they want to eat in a restaurant, and they want to buy memorabilia to bring home, that's a good thing. So I believe in what they're doing for our community, but yes, we need to figure out something fair. What fair is, I don't know. So I'm asking you to at least help me, because I can't speak for the whole council, these are my feelings coming out. And I thank everybody tonight for coming and sharing your thoughts, because some of the things are not far off from what I'm sure we've thought. There's things in my head that I think that people have already said, but I have to figure out what works best. And it's hard, I got to figure out for businesses, for individuals, my retired parents, my 22-year-old who wants to make this a home for the rest of his life. So, thank you to everybody.
I do, I do think that what she's saying makes a lot of sense. What I've heard most people say is that fair and equitable is, is the, is the strive, what they're striving for here. So, so that's, that's something that we'll, we have to, we have to figure out what that means. And, and a lot of the monetary contributions are things that are obviously very easy to quantify. And as we continue to move through the discussion after we close the open forum, which still have a couple of people who want to give closing comments, it seems, then, then I would encourage people here to, to listen and, and like she said, think about what that, what that contribution is, and, and then help us to understand what that looks like for you, or what you think that should look like, as well as, we will do the same, and we will be hearing probably from a lot of other people as well. So, so that's, that's, I thank you for making that comment. I think that is very helpful. So Fritz, you got a follow-up? Jim's got a follow-up? I think Petey had his hand up, so.
Can I, can I say something quick, too? I mean, just responding to some of the, I mean, I guess, well, you guys still have the opportunity to respond to things. And listening to, I think that's one of the issues that I see as, obviously a resident of Grand Marais, and I also have other property in Grand Marais, that the weight that is on the city residents as far as, one of the first things that Petey brought up was the fact of the, you know, the more people that come in, how the, the city taxpayers are shouldering the burden of all the visitors to the whole county. And, you know, we are paying for the infrastructure that all, everybody uses countywide. And it, you know, I mean, I've brought up at numerous meetings how I think, you know, I joked about running for county commissioner to try and raise taxes in the county and lower the taxes for people in the city of Grand Marais, which might do me good in my district in Grand Marais, but everybody in the rest of the county would hate me, right? But it's that, you know, the, the residents of Grand Marais are paying, I think, more than their fair share for the, for support of all the infrastructure which the whole county uses. Does that, I mean, I think we run a pretty tight ship, too, as far as, you know, looking at where we come in when we're doing all our budget work, the city departments, I think there are certainly places where there's maybe room, but, you know, when health insurance premiums go up 35% in a year, I mean, we're not going to not offer health insurance to our full-time employees. It's, it's just kind of the nature of the, the deal. One of the, you know, nothing is, this, it's awesome that so many people are here, but none of this is, I mean, we're not saying, okay, here we go, here's our decision, like, this is what we're going to do. I mean, this has been, I mean, I think when, when you guys came last, last meeting, we tasked you with coming back with more information. And so what I see, this opportunity with the city, North House is the one that came to us. They still have the original lease agreement, could continue to play on, and then there's an auto renewal period in that, which could continue to play out. Again, that stuff was set up, you guys, been 20 years?
14.
14 years. So that, that's well beyond any of us, right? I mean, that's the, and I understand where they placed things as they did then to make sure that it would make it. And it did. And they, North House admits that it has been successful, and I think everybody in the room admits that it's been successful, and it's been great for the community. So I see this as an opportunity, not just to say, well, North House wants a longer lease, so let's just do whatever North House wants. I see it as an opportunity for the city, instead of waiting for the terms to come to be as they're originally written, but for us to look at this earlier now, it's like, wow, you guys have blown expectations out of the water for your success. It's been a benefit to the community, let's find out what you can do for the city. Really. I mean, and that's what we tasked you with last time, as far as youth, youth involvement, commitments to the community going forward. Because again, if it is a 55-year lease, if, whatever that number is, even if it's a 10-year lease, more than likely, none of us are going to be sitting up here in 10 years, just simply because of the nature of the way councils turn over. So we want to make sure that everything that we, the decisions we make, everybody might not agree with what our decisions are, but my decisions are based on the information that I have at hand. And, and what I feel is the best situation, or it has the benefit for the whole community. I mean, I'm obviously a taxpayer in the city of Grand Marais. I mean, I, you know, if, if I feel like, I mean, that's, and that's where the cluster of nonprofits are, I mean, countywide, everybody's in Grand Marais, so it has an effect on the city residents. So, anyway, I'm looking at it as an opportunity to hopefully get the North House to be comfortable with the term of their lease that can help their endowment and, and continue their success into the future, but also find opportunities where they can participate with the city financially, in a, in a, in a manner that's more fair for the taxpayers of the city of Grand Marais. So anyways, it's not, yeah, that's, I guess that's all I wanted to say, and some of the feedback to a couple of the comments, anyway.
Does that change, does that change anything for you guys? Go ahead, Fritz.
Mr. Chairman, please allow me, oh, if you want.
Well, he, he can only hear you if you come up by the mic. So you got to come up to the mic. I believe you, Fritz.
Not really. I just, just want to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to remind everybody in this room, especially the council, that, that you are the elected members of a municipal corporation, elected board members of a municipal corporation. Your shareholders are the voters of Grand Marais. Okay? And I'm just, I'm putting it that way because I'd just like you to realize that, please be responsible to your shareholders. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Fritz. Any other closing comments from anyone?
I apologize, you made me so nervous last time I didn't finish my last comment.
I can be pretty intimidating.
Kelly reminded me, and I thought it was a simple solution, I would think, and, you know, they are tax-exempt in the property they buy, there's nothing you can do about it. But with the city property, it would be a pretty simple thing to take the tax value of the property, double it, and then charge, that's their lease. And when it goes up, the taxes go up, their lease goes up. Then you don't have to worry about inflation or trying to adjust things. It would be a pretty simple scenario.
Say that again, Petey, because I'm writing it down.
I would think.
Tax value?
I would take the tax value and double it.
Okay.
And that would be their contribution. And if the tax values go up, it goes up. If the tax value goes down, it goes down. And, and it would be a fair and equitable, easy solution to, from there. And I did have it on my notes, but I forgot.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other closing comments?
I just thought it might be kind of interesting to find out what North House would pay in taxes. Divide that up between all the taxpayers and see what their bill would be different if, if North House, you know? I doubt that it would make much difference in any, any individuals. I don't know. You know, say they paid $60,000 a year, isn't that what the golf course is losing now? I don't, I don't know if that comes into it at all, but, but.
No, that's not.
No. I thought, I thought I saw that in the paper. That's not this discussion. But anyway, you know, if you took that amount and divided it up between what everybody pays, it would be an interesting number to, to give people. I don't know if that would be mathematically possible.
Well, in the packet, there is, North House does provide numbers that summarize what the, the property tax, like a full property tax payment is, or would have been, right? Greg, I'm looking at you.
Anyway, that would be, you know, a way to, a concrete way to, to know what, how North House is affecting our taxes, or not.
Okay.
Thanks, Fritz.
Thank you.
Okay. Last one? Anybody else want to say anything?
This is all new stuff.
All new stuff?
Yep.
We dealt with him for a while, but, yeah.
No, he's going to bring new comments.
Oh, new comments? Got it. Okay.
New stuff.
Yeah, new stuff.
New stuff.
Kelly. Yeah. Are copies of the lease available to taxpayers in this county?
Uh, that's.
Sure. That's public information. It's available at City Hall.
Are there copies of the North House school proposal available?
The proposal that they made?
Yep.
Yeah. And board packets are online. You can check out.
Board packets are online, so everything's there.
Great. Yeah, you all know how good I am with the computer.
Deb will help you.
Thank you. Now, is there any wiggle room in this lease? Or, I mean, is it just a set-in-stone lease that we have?
The current lease that we have?
Yes.
It's some, I mean, it's pretty prescriptive. There's, there, part of the reason we need to redo the lease, and, and this is probably good foundation work for everybody who's here, part of the reason we need to redo the lease is that when we first started this conversation with North House like two years ago, which you can tell how far we've made it since, you know, in two years, one of the things that, that the city attorney brought to our attention was that there are, there are a lot of, of internal inconsistencies in the lease itself. And that's, that's not to say that it isn't strong, it's to say that, that it's, leaves it open to interpretation.
Yep.
And, and those are things that, that should be corrected, just so that the relationship between North House and the city is clear. And, and I, I see that as, as a reason enough for us to, to pursue renegotiating the lease because, you know, it depends on who the, on who the counselors are and who the leadership at North House is. And I think we've been pretty lucky thus far that leadership at North House has not sought to really push the envelope, and that the council has, you know, has kind of just been like, all right, North House, do your thing, let's see what you got, we're going to, you know, we'll take a look at this, we'll take a look at this as things, as things transpire. Well, they're transpiring, we're taking a look at it, and that's how the whole system is built to work. Yeah. So I guess that's a little bit of background information.
Well, I look at it this way, I was in research for many years, and the one sign that I kept, you know, at my desk and in the lab was quite simple, where I must use all the available facts, true facts, not emotion, to make a decision, the correct decision. So that's where, I'm a numbers guy. I got to, if I can see the numbers, that's fine. And one thing that we really have to watch is that perception is very damaging. To the tune that, let's see, North House went and paid three times the value, assessed value of this land, but they only have to pay $362 a month for a lease. Doesn't seem they can't afford it to pay more, that's, it's all perception. And that's why you're going to catch a heat, is that they did this, they only pay that? No wonder they have all that money.
Part of that, probably, I mean, just, at least the way I understand, like, if you're buying a business, they're not just buying property, right? They're buying a, a business.
Absolutely.
Right? So like, there's obviously, it's not, if, there's a business that was going along with that. I mean, that's what I guess I would assume is where, where that, from what the taxable market value of the property is.
And the equipment.
Versus what, versus what a business.
Right. But I bet you maybe it was half.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I guess that's all I.
But it's all perception.
Yeah.
You and I both know what they got in the deal, what about the rest of the city?
I think there was a pretty good IRRB grant in there, too.
Yeah, but I mean.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
If the information isn't available enough to the people.
It's out there. I mean. I mean, the IRRB, it's in the newspaper. I mean, there was.
Yeah, that's, it sounds good, but a lot of people, how would you say? Don't have it very available to them.
How would you recommend we get it available to them?
And that's where we struggle. We even had this conversation a couple of weeks ago with a gal from the paper who happens to be here, because some of the things happening in planning, zoning are very large. And people say, I didn't know. And I'm one of those in a lot of things, right? If I haven't read the paper, if I don't go do my homework and look online, I will say, I've been appointed in February, I read the lease today. Okay? Because it's like, I gotta do my homework. I need to be able to know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely.
And part of that is people saying, I don't know how to find it. So anything you want to know citywide for us, planning and zoning, city council, is all online. Google City of Grand Marais. We know how to Google, right? Is that my brother-in-law?
Or just, or just call me. Like, Fritz and I talked at the Sona the other day. I mean, like, I'll, I'll sit down and talk.
Ain't gonna happen.
No, that's fine. You don't have to come to the Sona. But we can talk some other place. Coffee, tea, I don't know, beer, whatever.
Yeah, but contact your counselors, because I will say, people are here. I have not had a phone call. My email isn't on the website. It will be tomorrow. I have had nobody stop me on the street and say, hey. And one thing I've known, growing up in this community my whole life, is people will sit, growing up, growing, people will sit in a coffee shop, people will stand at work and talk about it, but when it comes time to go to the meetings and find out and understand fully, or really go read something, it's been a little lackadaisical. I'm not going to characterize everybody that way, but it's been lackadaisical.
I agree 100%.
So however we can get the information out, and if it's easy to email me and say, where do I find this? I will direct you. And I've, we all don't know all the answers. Don't know what they were thinking when they did this 14 years ago. I even thought today, maybe I need to call Mark Sandel and say, can you tell me some background in what, what you were doing and thinking? Because that helps. It really does. If you don't have all the facts and people's perspectives.
You have nothing.
I don't have anything. The other thing is knowing somebody's heart when they go to do something. And was their heart in the right place in what they were doing for the community? And I think for the people sitting here and for the three gentlemen here tonight, our heart is in the right place for our community, as well as all of you here. But again, I say it's about the community. I'm not a me person. And I think anybody who knows you will tell you that I will do whatever I can to help another person. I'm the last person to take care of myself. So we're here to do what's best for the citizens. It might not be the same idea. Mine might be different from yours, and yours, and yours, but I'm here trying to do my best. And I think that's what everybody wants to do.
I think that's, I think that's like part of your, if you're gonna be here, you're, you do have the information right in front of you. And if you do a good job, then you read and you understand what it is you're trying to make decisions on, right? I mean, I find that I was much more disconnected and all you hear is, oh, this happened. And like, why in the world did that happen? Or how did that happen? And you're like, oh, that's getting out right, you know? But when you're here, or when you actually have the information in front of you, I honestly, I've only been on here for four years, and I've probably gotten six phone calls, two emails in that whole time. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
And it's not, and it's not anything about, but I feel like anytime somebody does say something like, at least like, you know, I mean, I think Pete can say that like, I didn't, you know, there was some stuff that went down and I went and talked to, you know, I feel like I am responsive, right? And I, but I also think like, sometimes if the information, if, if I can explain, or we can explain, when somebody brings up like, well, why in the world did you guys do this? If we can say, well, here's the information that we had to go off of to make that decision, and then you can explain that and show that to them, they might turn 180. They might not. And that's, that's just, that's, because people are different. Right? But at least like, you can say, well, this is the information that I had to make the decision that I made, and I thought, based on our conversations, that that was the right way to go. And so I think that's true, what Kelly says. I mean, I think all of us are open, I mean, I, you know, I mean, my phone number's on the side of my truck. I mean, like, you know, my email are on the city website. I mean, all that stuff it is. You know, I mean, like, there's a pretty, you know, it's a small town. I mean, I just, I, anybody here, I know, people, if they have questions or concerns, or like Kelly says, like, they want to see things, like, that's what we want. We want, we're trying, it's, it's hard then, right? If nobody responds, and we try and make the decision based on the information we have in front of us, that we think is the best thing for the city, you're always gonna have people that are against something. That's just the nature of things.
You gotta be doing everything right if nobody tells you you're doing it wrong.
Well, I'll tell you.
And, and there aren't many people running for seats.
No.
I mean, Jonathan and I were the only two, and I know that there took some prodding a little bit, and people reached out to him. I hadn't thought of it for a while. Job change assisted me. There's still not enough time in my day to do what I, what I personally feel I should be doing for the citizens. But there aren't a lot of people out there running either. So when there's nobody knocking on the door to get in, you kind of go, is everything going okay? Because nobody's here telling me I'm doing it wrong.
You know what the flip side of that is? Everybody feels that nothing will be done by the committees and commissioners, council person, it doesn't matter. They figure that they're talking to deaf ears. Nothing will be done. They're gonna make a decision, whether I talk or not, that decision's already been made.
Yep. Passive, passive.
And so everybody sits back and goes.
Well, I hope that we can, that we can convince everyone in this room, at least, that, you know, in taking the time to have these conversations, to actually have a conversation about this, instead of just have this be a public forum where you guys just sit and, you know, you say your piece and then, and then we don't respond to it and everything's dull and stupid, then that we're, like, we're taking notes on this. We, we hear what you guys are saying. Fair and equitable is achievable. The definition of what fair and equitable is, is something that we're all gonna have to have a conversation about. So, so that's something that, that I would encourage you to, to, to contact your council of people and, and to discuss with them what your ideas are, because that's gonna be important. It's gonna be important information.
I think you made a huge step forward, just in the simple fact that you're actually responding to the attendees of this meeting. That's a huge step right there.
That's our job.
I think we owe that to you guys.
Oh, you think? Yeah.
I do.
Yeah. And that's, that's what an important part is. And secondly, I used to put on seminars all over North America. Chocolate chip coffee, choc, chip cookies and coffee goes a long ways on attendance.
Yeah.
No question about it.
I like cookies.
Steak gets even further.
I'm not gonna tell you there's chocolate chip cookies at my house, because I don't want you all there to.
Yeah, exactly.
You wouldn't let me in anyways.
You're right.
Any final comments?
I thank you very much for the time.
I don't know if this is the time, but I have a comment on something else before the open forum.
Well, it's the open forum, so yeah. So now is the time to talk about it. I mean.
You're switching gears?
Technically, if you read the, if you read the open forum, if you read the open forum rules, it says that the open forum doesn't go for more than 10 minutes with five minutes spent on each topic.
I'll be fast.
We're already shooting that in the foot, so you're, so you can, yeah. Let us know what you got.
Okay. I'm here, and I know you're looking into this, but I'm here to comment on the request from the county to ask the city to pay $40,000 more dollars to the Y. The county signed the 20-year contract with the Y, and I'm wondering if the existing contract between the city and the county was void when they signed a new contract. I don't know. Do you know if they did? The city taxpayers should not have to absorb another $40,000 besides the 110 or whatever it is with the 5%, whatever. It's, it's spread amongst the tax base of Grand Marais residents. And I liked what Anton said about, you know, the city taxes are, my city taxes are now actually more, the base tax is more than the county tax. And that's no kidding. And so this would be another thing that the city taxpayers would have to spread amongst them. And I'd like to know what checks and balances are in place when the county, do they give you a bill and say, these are the expenses that we're paying? Do you get something to look at? When they, county agreed to pay all the repairs. I mean, they're paying maintenance, labor costs, supplies, exercise equipment. They're even paying for the exercise equipment, which I didn't know until the other day. Was the city informed of this and did you agree to this? I mean, I don't know what your contract is. I'd like to get a copy of it. I'm a proponent, and I have used the Y, I use the old pool. I want to see it succeed, but I think that the county and the, and the city shouldn't have to shoulder extra expenses. And I think the Y, and I'm gonna tell the county this, too, that the Y needs to start paying something of these things. And I don't know where their, I know their money goes to the Y in Duluth. It's, it pays for personnel, but there's a lot of members there. And so I don't believe that the city, when you're making a decision on that, and I know you're gonna be looking at it, and you requested financials, but I find that, I hope that you do not agree to that. And like I say, I'm not against the Y, but something needs to change.
Well, in response to that, you know, the, the original agreement, whether it's null and void or not, there's renegotiation that has to happen. Because arrangements have changed, and the relationship thus has changed as well. What we alluded to at the, when we, when we had the memo come from the county saying, hey, we'd like to renegotiate that, was, was, was actually, this is a, this is a great opportunity for us to get into those numbers and realize, and try and figure out what exactly has been going on, and to figure out what are the ways that we can, that we can be a part of helping the Y control their expenses and actually make sure that they can, that they can be solvent. Because, because the, if the Y was really, truly designed to, to function with 300 members and have a shortfall of, you know, some odd $300,000 or something like that, with 1,700 members, then you would assume that they should be pretty close to breaking even.
Right.
So, so what, part of what we requested the financials for, and we're gonna be having a work, work session with the, the Y administration, and I think the county as well, or maybe not even with the Y administration, just with the county.
Maybe just with the county.
We're figuring, we're gonna figure it out.
But with the financials from the Y, because it's been a couple, well.
Been five years.
No, it's, she was here at, I mean, when we first.
Oh, having them give the.
Giving them up the updates. It's been a.
Yeah, but what we're, what we're gonna look at is we're gonna look at the financials throughout the history of the operation of the Y, and see if we can get some patterns out of that. Because it's, it's, you know, I think that a new, a new contract could actually put more responsibility on the YMCA for, for what their actual financial commitment for it is.
Right, and I agree. And I know there, there's a lot of nonprofits in the city right now, and I know people have made comments, and I agree with what most of them have said. We, there, I think I asked today a couple of years ago, with all the tourism, and I believe we're at a saturation point of tourism right now, what this town can handle. I mean, seriously, it can't handle anymore. People are looking to fill jobs. They can't get people to do it. We're paying more law enforcement fees. We're paying the garbage. I see garbage cans all over, garbage fees. We're paying Pete's potties.
Yeah, but they're important.
And, and the wear and tear on the streets and the infrastructure here. And so I want to see something, and I don't know, I don't have the answer, but the taxpayers of the City of Grand Marais cannot continue to pay these kinds of taxes. So not only are we looking at it from the North Pole coast, to maybe pay some more so it would help spread it out. I mean, well, and, and the city took the Tom Toboda property, and I'm not getting into that, but that was another probably $20,000 tax base. And so we city people need to have some relief here. So I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think on that note, then we're gonna close the, close the open forum, and then move on to the first thing on our, our agenda. Oh, man, we haven't even done the consent agenda yet.
Nope.
Well, let's get through that, and then we can, all right, so we have the traditional three things. We've got the agenda, the meeting minutes, and the payment of bills on the consent agenda. I know, I'm just trying to go through the motions. Okay, so there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Carries? Okay, so moving right along. So this is what we have on the agenda as a North House lease discussion, for you to present the information that you have brought forward. So come on up, and while you guys are coming up, I'm going to make a little bit of an announcement. So it may be known to folks in the, in the community that I do teach courses at the folk school. I teach sausage making and meat preservation classes at the folk school. And so to avoid a, an appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from the negotiations that will happen between North House and the city. So that, what that means is that I will manage the conversation, I will not contribute to the conversation in, in open meetings, and I will not be a part of negotiations outside of, outside of open meetings. So that's, that's what that looks like. And, and so with that said, I'm going to manage this meeting and turn it over to you guys to present some information. We asked for some specific information at the, at the last meeting, and I believe that the, the packet reflects that information. So if you can walk us through this information, that would be, that would be great.
Great. If I may, I'd like to actually share my comments in two sections. And first, kind of respond and engage this group, because, you know, the seed called North House was planted in rich soil. The City of Grand Marais, we feel lucky to be here. And I wanna, you know, make sure people know that we want to be part of this community. So first, I want to thank folks for, they appreciate what North House has accomplished. We've worked hard over 21 years. A lot of people have lowered their shoulders to help make things happen. You know, when fires ripped into the red building, when a truck ran over a fish house of a guy named Tommy Echol, when we needed to have pots of chowder brought to campus for the Wooden Boat Show, community members have stepped up. And thank you for that. And while I want to talk about, you know, while we definitely look forward and want to work with our community, I think it needs to be based both on what North House has accomplished, but also what North House is and what North House is not. Hopefully, everybody's aware, North House is a 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit. Okay, so what is that, what does that mean? Well, it means people can give us charitable gifts, means we don't pay taxes, property But, but it's in exchange for something. We're a service organization. Our task isn't to exit, to create profit. Our task is to serve community.[1636.12] to create profit. Our task is to serve community. We have a mission that calls to do that, and if we fail to meet that mission, our nonprofit status can be stripped away from us. It's that simple. And, you know, our mission is to enrich lives and build community through the teaching of traditional northern crafts, to tell the story of this place and other places like it in the north. And it's working well. A lot of people think, well, North House is thriving, they must have cash. Nothing could be further from the truth. Are we better off than when I started in 2001 and we had $25 in the checking account and we were $25,000 in operating debt? We've made some progress, yes, yeah. But in fact, tuition dollars from all the coursework we offer generates slightly over 50% of our revenue base. So, the rest of it needs to come from somewhere else. And so where? You know, it comes from people who believe in the mission of the school, people who are not just in this community, though we're blessed with many businesses who support us, thank you, but from every state, other countries, people who give 25 bucks, people who give 250 bucks, people who give thousands of dollars because they believe in what we're doing here and because they love Grand Marais, Minnesota. They want us to thrive together. Similarly, there's foundations who look to us and go, oh my goodness, most rural communities in this world are challenged because things are sinking. I'm not saying we don't have challenges, we certainly do. Success has its challenges, and this is why we're here at the table together. So, interested in rural vitality, but similarly, interested in the idea that these traditions matter in this world and that there need to be places that still believe and teach these things. And North House is one of these crossroads. Not in Minnesota, not in the Midwest, or not just in Minnesota, not just in the Midwest, not just in the nation, but now in this world. We are this thing. So then, how could we do all this? How could we buy the green building? How could we be lucky enough to sit down with Harley and Shelley Toftke and say, yeah, you do own a piece of property right next door to our campus? You know, what's the adage? Location, location, location. Is that piece of property worth more to us probably than anyone else? Yes, it's true. And who knew that? Two great people named Harley and Shelley. So, do we have excess cash? Yes, we didn't. We've had donors, foundations, organizations that have stepped forward and literally fueled every dollar of the purchase and every dollar of the improvements that have happened on these parcels of property. If our tuition dollars is only generating 50% of our income base, there is no way we have excess cash just rolling around. So, but I'm not trying to suggest North House is suffering, however, we're thriving. And that's a good thing. The number of staff who work for us full-time is growing, the number of instructors locally and regionally who work for us is growing, and indeed, you look at our numbers, and the rhythm of our enrollment is vastly different than the rhythm of tourism. We have more students in February than we have in August. We have more students in October than we have in August. This is a great thing for North House. This is a great thing for our community. And, you know, on average, right now, last year, 200 students a month. Okay, let's put that into days. So, if their average class is three days, that's 600 days of lodging. That's 1,800 meals of eating. This is creating vitality in our community and momentum in our community and more cars in our community. I get that. I'm not trying to run away from the facts at all. You know, but North House fits here because we're creating not just a strong July, because we're creating a sustainable local economy based on the roots of a community that I think we all know and we all love. So, why are we here to make this presentation? It's really simple. A number of years ago, we sat down, and I like to think with a really good heart, I'd be happy to sit down and explain where did this $365 number came from. There was logic, and I think great logic is about, and the idea was, go North House, go. And we've gone. And now, we're at a really different place. We're gonna need to make some evolutionary steps. We're gonna need to look out to the world and say, we wanna thrive and grow. Will you invest in us? We need to find hundreds of thousands of dollars, possibly millions of dollars, to invest in the future of the school, potentially, and really to invest in the future of this community. And are they gonna invest in us if the lease is for five years? The answer to that question is obvious. No, they aren't. So, we've come to say, we think we'd better start to plan for the future together. The world's a little different when we wrote the first lease. Let's sit down. And of course, we're having some great conversations. So, we're here not because our current lease is timing out. We've got another 11 years and it automatically renews, so we could have another 25 years. But the world's changed. We should sit down and talk again. That's why we're here, for the right reason, I like to think. And there's lots of issues to discuss, for sure. But that's why we're here, to try to think about the future together. And I hope that we can do that in a way at once honoring the needs of the community and also thinking about the future of North House and what's gonna help continue to advance us and push us forward. Because the returns aren't just about how much cash we can bring back to the table. We're not a for-profit, cash-generating business. We're a service-based nonprofit, and we bring things back to this community that aren't just about how much cash we can put on the table. So, that's my thoughts in response to kind of this today. Now, I wanna talk about the packet.
Mm-hmm.
Fair enough.
Yes.
So, when we were here last, we were asked for several different things. One question which I heard, we heard loud and clear, was, you know, well, geez, can you put some language around this thing about return to the community, service to local youth especially, service to community, other things like that. And so, we started to create, and it says very, and I'll note to everyone in the room and everyone listening in and elsewhere, you know, this information is in the packet. You're also welcome to contact North House to get it. And it says very specifically, concept, draft, language.
And just to interject a touch, because I see people looking for packets. We printed out extra packets, but we obviously didn't know to expect that there'd be 27 or 37 people. So if you have a packet and you're willing to share and have somebody look over your shoulder, please do so. I think that there's probably five or six of them floating around out there.
If you have your phone, you can also find it online and look.
Sure, we have two extras here, if any of you.
Yeah, so if anybody wants, that's just the North House presentation, yeah.
And so, we drafted some language around what I would call five legs to the stool, because we talked about stools, didn't we? One is, you know, North House should be financially strong and healthy. If we're not, the city should have questions. So there's boom, number one. Two, we should invest in our community, and there's lots of things that that might mean. Economic vitality, an open campus that anybody can visit anytime, international visibility for this part of the world, community projects, dedicated programs servicing youth, community programs that target and engage accessibility for all Cook County residents, and of course, taking care of the city-owned property. So, our job, I think, coming out of the meeting last time, was bring back some draft language so we can begin to think about what this might look like. And I'm not proposing this, I'm just bringing something to the table, so there's stuff to talk about. Second thing you asked very specifically for was, does North House engage local youth? And I hope these next three pages speak directly to that question. Every third, fourth, and fifth grader in this community comes down for multi-day programs at North House and have done so for 21 years. Currently, those programs are offered free of charge because North House has secured funding to make that happen. Currently, high school students from the timber framing come down for timber framing and culinary arts. These programs offered free of charge to serve local youth. The list goes on. This summer, a new youth sailing camp, a youth decan program where kids not only get to sail on the schooner yordas, but are paid to sail on the schooner yordas, public programs for youth during special events, free. List goes on and on. And of course, ideas looking to the future. You also asked for us to show some of the other community engagement that is emerging. And so, there are some samples, snowshoe-making basics class that we're offering in Grand Portage at their request, so their kids can snowshoe into the sugar bush. What an incredible opportunity and privilege for North House to be a part of that. A community felted rug project that's gonna involve kids and families, instructors, that'll happen over a series of weeks this fall. I mentioned the sailing programs that are expanding. And then, of course, October, November, January, February, March, we offer a series of Thursday night programs, free of charge, drop-in, art films, skill shares, it changes each month, has a different theme. So I've got a sample from last February. And emerging this fall, a new handworks club after-school program. If I have this right, 10 weeks of programming for kids 10 to 16, 35 bucks with scholarships available with a check of a box.
Greg, I'm gonna ask one quick question, just so it defines for people listening. These things would be on your website, like some of the free programming Thursday nights? Can they find it on your website?
If you go to the community programs tab, this is one of the things we're evolving, is trying to make an even more transparent, or let's see, make the growing array of community and youth programs more aggressively visible. Because right now, what's most visible? Our core coursework, which is how we make a living.
Sure.
But yeah, great question.
But this does appear in newspaper and.
Yeah, I mean, there's, go to the library.
I'm just thinking as we have the conversation tonight with people.
Yep, and again, I'm happy.
It's not like I've never said it in my life.
If anybody wants this packet, we got it for you. So, the last two pages address some numbers, because people have said, you know, are there facts out there? And here's several. So, the first number here is an estimation of North House's total economic impact over the past 20 years. And maybe everybody remembers, North House has done two economic impact studies, one when we turned 10 and one when we turned 20. The 10-year study estimated that we had a $6 million impact in 2007. The 20-year economic impact study estimates that we have a $10 million impact locally. So if you take 0 to 10, and you draw a line from 0 to 6 million, and then you add all those numbers up, and then for years 11 through 20, you take 6 to 10, and you draw a straight line, and then you add all those numbers up, what does that number add up to? The answer is $112 million. Okay, well, what about employment? North House has grown. How many people, how many dollars have we paid over the past 20 years for people to live and work and pay taxes and raise their kids in this community? The answer, as of a year ago, $4 million. We're adding one, and that's over 20 years, we're adding on average, a new full-time staff person every year and a half. In 20 years of service to this community, how much local youth engagement at free or reduced costs have been provided? And this, again, as of a year ago, our estimate is about 33,000 days of service to this community.
And that's days, not dollars?
Correct, days. So, the last page attempts to engage the question, okay, but the city invested.
Can I ask a quick question? What's your going tuition rate for a day of class?
It ranges from $75 to $105 per day. So, the last page asks a simple question. Okay, so then how much property tax was left on the table during that same period of 20 years? So, the first line says, estimated property tax that would have been paid on the city-owned parcel, estimated over 20 years. And what I've done is, you know, I contacted the county and I got the property value and their tax rates, and then I applied an inflation rate. Now, admittedly, we don't own that piece of property, so we shouldn't, you own it, and indeed, no one has ever paid tax on that piece of property because the feds owned it before you did. But, still, North House's estimated property tax on the piece of property that we bought from Tommy Echol, which we call the Echol property, $247,000 over 20 years. And now, the parcel across the street, 35. So, if you total that up, it's about $600,000 over 20 years. But we have paid, one, rent, and two, we do pay property tax. When we are using property for our mission, by federal law, we can apply for property tax exemption. That's one of the benefits of being a service, a 501(c)(3), a service organization focused on community. But if we're not using it to support our charitable purpose, we get to pay property tax. So, the half of the green building we rent, the restaurant that we rent, we absolutely, when Tommy was using his fish house down by the water, but we owned the property, we absolutely paid property tax. So, over the years, we paid about $22,000. So, total community investment in terms of property tax, around a half a million dollars. And there's, you know, go ahead.
Also the rent payments.
There's rent payments, yeah, actual rent payments of $62,000, $63,000 over the years. So, it's, you know, it's, the idea is, do communities invest in assets that they believe will shape their future? The simple answer to that question is they do all the time. We do make these choices as a community all the time. And this community has, we've worked together. And have we had an impact? Well, again, if we go back to the return sheet and we look at the economic impact, we do. And is it working perfectly? And could it be true that it could and should? But, again, facts matter, numbers matter. Understanding how places like North House work and how to shape a meaningful partnership matters. So, I'm hoping I gathered some of the data you wanted, some examples of language, some summary of kind of the type of programming and community engagement, especially youth, that we do, and then some numbers to help us understand and frame the journey of the past 20 years. So, questions about what we brought? Anything to add?
I had a good question. So, I see the, I guess my disconnect maybe in what we asked for last time is the jump, which is probably why Jay had asked what the daily rate is for class hours, like for class days. And I know that in the draft agreement, there is, here is what we've done, and that accounts for a blank percent. And I guess I'm wondering, do you have numbers to fill those blanks in section 3, you know, 1, and sections 4, 2 there?
Great question, Anton. And I think, do we have five years of data all captured in exactly the same way so I can give you kind of authority? No, I don't, you know?
Me neither.
A lot has evolved. And so, the idea, or my hope in coming back to this wasn't, here's something, let's vote on it. But have we pushed the ball in the right direction? We're gathering this kind of data. We're talking about this in the right way. And that's, I think, what our hope was. Here's some examples, the kind of language we could use to help shape and advance our understanding and working together. If this is the right idea, we'll keep plowing forward. I do have a summary of 2017, and the approximate value of programming. Last year, the grand total of public programs offered at reduced to free rates were 2,040 user days, estimated value $50,000.
True.
So, and I brought a copy of that for each of you, if you'd like it. I didn't print enough. I printed four extra copies. So, but again, I mean, this is, we're an educational nonprofit, we're a community nonprofit, this is, yeah.
I would take it, Greg, just because visuals are so helpful.
I would like one.
Finance.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anton, one of the things that you asked for the last meeting was to take kind of those four or five legs of the stool.
Yeah.
And put some quantification. And that's not, you know, it's not always real easy.
Oh, yeah.
So that, but this was our attempt to try to put some quantification out, and some of those gaps will come. But if this is the right direction, then does that help with the quantification you were looking for? Or is there something else we need to do? I guess that's.
No, this, this information, I'm sure, will be more helpful. For me, it's, you know, at first, looking at the local community engagement portion on the total return to community page, you know, when you're talking of millions of dollars and tens of millions of dollars through, and then it jumps, not monetarily, right, not talking dollars, but talking to class days. You know, of course, I'm still running a dollar sign down in that column, and I'm like, what? Like, that's ridiculous. Like, you guys need to step it up if you're only putting in $3,000 in the youth community.
$3,000.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's not right.
It's not dollars, right. It's not dollars. So that, that's.
Average that at 100 bucks and 300.
Right. It's three, yeah, right, it's 3 million.
If you multiply. If you multiply that by 75, which is the conservative rate for tuition, that gets you $2,505,000.
So, this, I'll look at this, and that'll help. But that's, yeah, that's, because that's what I want, is that, so if, if, how does the growth, which we know won't be exponential, because there will be some leveling out at some point of North House and their success, and the classes offered, and just what you guys can offer, but how then, how then, what the community offerings are and the community involvement? How that, those metrics parallel each other, and how they, they can work with each other? If there's a leveling off, we don't expect necessarily that the youth programs will continue to climb through. So, anyway, this is, I'll look at this. This wasn't in the packet, was it?
No.
No, and I think this is really helpful, if we, I guess, if we want to put numbers in the packet, then this is a way, you know, when you and I, and I wasn't here two weeks ago, but when you and I met, Greg, just so you could kind of help me start getting my feet wet in all of this, that was one of my questions to you that I talked about, was, tell me kind of what you do for the community. That's a very important piece, you and I had the discussion, but for others to hear, that that's a very important piece to me, as to what businesses in our community do back for our community, right? I can think of many businesses and times that I've been in volunteer organizations, that we go to businesses and say, can you give for a silent auction? Can you give us this for the Curling Club? We're having bonds feelers in, we'd like something for our raffle, right? We go back always, whether you're a school function, whether you're a civic organization, whether you're a church, and you ask your community to kind of give back and help you, because they're making the money. So, they should help those of us who are nonprofit, and just trying to hang in there and, and do our thing. So, it's very important to me to find out what people are doing. You answered it for me that day. You didn't have the numbers exactly, but we talked about all the different things in what is done. And I think, for me, as a councilperson, that's one of the things that helps me understand and look at a business, because everybody says, okay, property tax, and I get that, but one of the other things that I want people to understand what I'm looking at is, North House is a destination. If we put Applebee's there, if we put Hilton Hotel there, if we put, I don't know, Macy's there, okay? Most of us don't choose where we're going to go on vacation based upon where we're going to eat. You might choose a destination knowing that it's a great place, and there's good restaurants, and there's nightlife, and everything else. But I don't think, where do I want to go on vacation, and, well, you know, I really love this restaurant, so this is where I'm going to go. North House is a destination, and that draws people here, and the fact that you're giving back to our community in this volume, whether it's numbers or dollar signs, speaks heavily to me, and that's very important to me. Again, not saying that determines how they pay or don't pay or the lease, but I want people to understand, for me personally, what I'm looking at, when I'm trying to figure out things, and considering all aspects. Because I've had someone in my own family say, well, something else should be there, you could have a restaurant. We could, but you know what? I wouldn't drive to Grand Marais just for a restaurant. And everybody says, we're the coolest small town. It's only a title. Titles will go away. Miss America loses her crown after a year. Grand Marais will lose its crown eventually. We've been doing this for a long time, folks, over 30 years. We sat here one night and talked about how the campground has grown. Pete brought up numbers. There's no doubt about it, how the campground has grown, but it can only go so far. We keep riding this, we're heading up on the roller coaster, well, everybody knows the roller coaster comes back down. So, we have to find a way to sustain if we want to live here, and with our property taxes, but it also means bringing people and keeping people in our community. How many of us have thought, and I know there's friends in my group that think, you know what, I can't do this anymore, and I'm ready to leave, or there's nothing for me to do? If it weren't, and I'll say it for me, I haven't done North House, but if it weren't for Curling, if it weren't for some of the things that my family does, we probably would look to leave. We struggle in my house to find date night, which I think is important. What are we going to go do that's different? My anniversary dinner, my favorite place to go, is 35 miles away from the downtown city spot. And why? Because the service, and the staff, and the owner give back to the community, and they give a great product. It's what you're doing.
Kelly, a point to add to what you were saying about, this is, North House is a destination. It's not just the restaurants and the hotels that benefit, because you, the whole North Shore benefits from people heading up this way, the infrastructure of this, you know, this city benefits, people buy gasoline, sweatshirts, t-shirts, you know, all souvenirs, all kinds of other things that go along with that, so. And how do you ever quantify all of that? But it also happens in the wintertime, when, you know, you can go to, I can name some cities around the country that are in the northern tier, that basically roll up the sidewalks in the winter.
Yeah, we used to. We used to.
And I've only been here five years, but I can, I can tell you, I, we came up here, before we moved up here, we, and made the decision to do that, we came here a lot in the winter to see, and I was also surprised that there was so much activity in this city during wintertime. This is one reason, or big reason.
So, I also thank you for giving, coming back. Again, I watched the meeting from two weeks ago, so thank you for coming back and doing this, and continuing to educate us. You've got some experience in this for 20 years, so, thank you, Greg.
Just 17, yes.
Oh, only 17?
Do you have anything else that you wanted to talk about the numbers specifically?
No.
Councilpeople, do you have any questions that you would like to ask?
Just wanted to clarify the economic impact study.
Yep.
That's, that ended last year, but did those, were those, you said a lot of them were estimates, but if, if it ended in 2017, wouldn't there be some real numbers that would flush out of that as well?
So, the way the economic impact studies were functioned is, we used Minnesota's tourism data, which, you know, is regionally available, so, a person who stays in a bed and breakfast, and travels to this part of the state, spends the following amount of money per day. So, we, we have lots of data on day use of how long, when do our students come? How long do they stay? How many people come to our special events? We have survey data on the number of people, students who bring people with them, because, of course, spending doubles as soon as you bring two or three people, right? And so, and then you have instructors visiting, and you, so you, all this counting of days is layered in, and then we use the multipliers, the u, the tourism, and we break it out by month. And, and that's how we can, you know, one, see how, one, see the busy periods of our operational year, and programmatic educational year, but also see then how it aligns with the tourism year. So, so really, again, our momentum levels off, to some degree, some of the roller coasters of the economic. So, again, I'm happy to provide that, I certainly have provided that to the council in the past. I may have given you guys copies, but if, if anybody needs those, I can, I can provide that too. Yep. So, I think, I think the only thing I want to say is clarify, you know, where to from here, in the sense of, there's a lot to talk about. I think it's, we're able and willing to do that. We also have a lot of other work we want to do. And, you know, we really are looking to the city to understand how, how do we get from where we are to where we might want to be? And how do we do that in a way that only builds and enhances the strength of our community and the shared sense of partnership that we have? And, you know, we're not in a rush, we've got a functioning lease right now, but there's, you know, there's, there's some opportunities here that, again, as you've said, Jay, you know, might be worth working on. So, and I don't know if, this is the time to try to answer that, or whether we should just say...
Ball's in your court.
Well, that's, I mean, it's up to the council, I mean, largely, how much more conversation tonight, if there's things we need to digest, if, if there are, you know, perhaps some, a study into the current lease needs to be, needs to be done a little bit more, more deeply. But, I don't know much, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts.
I'm always the one that talks a lot, so, I want to really read some more.
Good.
Digest and understand. My thought process is that I opened it up and invited, and I hope people will take me up on my offer to share thoughts of how they think we should go about this, and maybe those sitting in the room now understand a bit more what a 501 is, and what it means, and that people will come forward with some ideas, so that, in my head, I can say, hey, we've thought of this, we can have discussions. They're going to hear things different, probably from people they know than I know than whatever, that we come back and have this conversation again, as to what are we hearing? And maybe look after the first of the year, we're already at the last meeting of September, we're going into the holiday season, I know we have other things on our plate. Not trying to put you off, again, we have something in place that does not change anything. I think your, your investors at this point would see what we have as holding in place, and if they look at the contract, would say, hey? I think that it gives us some time to understand whether or not, one, two, three, four of us, whether or not the four of us, or Tim is back here after the first of the year, whether or not the four of us are all here or not. Hopefully, we don't have to, we wouldn't have to start all over at that point, or you wouldn't have to. But my thought is that after the first of the year, we kind of come back with some more ideas, and really start a discussion about where do we want this to go, or here's what we're thinking, here's some ideas we have, and then start having dialogue, because I think that's going to be a back and forth process, that hopefully, then, we can accomplish something. I'm sure taxpayers would like us to see this move forward, probably sooner than later. Again, we could sit on this for 11 more years, you know? It's not to their benefit, really, per se. So, that's kind of my thoughts, I don't know what these two are thinking.
Well, I think having this is helpful, that was part of what I was trying to get out of, that was the, one of the missing pieces, isn't how, in the new agreement, and one of, one of the things that I'd see changing is how we guarantee that there is that return, be it in, you know, actual projects within the community, you know, like the, that where the North House could work together with the city, and, and different projects that the city has happening, in support of, and of different activities, and then also just the, the local education and youth side of it. So, that's, I mean, that's helpful for me, and I think, you know, I didn't, I mean, I just glanced at this stuff here, it'd be interesting to look through it. I don't know if we necessarily, well, I'm, I'm open to whatever, if people want to wait until after the first of the year, that's fine too, but, I don't know, it's been a couple of years of talking back and forth, and I feel like we're getting closer. I mean, I think it makes sense to have at least all of us here to start trying to, I don't know, yeah, I'm, I'm interested to hear feedback, and I, and I guess I would be interested to hear feedback, again, based on everybody having information, the same information in front of them, you know? And how we reassess what the lease, lease terms are, and, and what the city, and the people that live in the city can, hopefully, you know, we can, we can work with you guys to make something that's fair for everybody.
I, I appreciate the numbers that you brought here. That was everything I was asking for. What, what is the actual, if we could put it quantifiably financial, what you're giving back to the community? There's $4 million in employment over 20 years, let's say 3 million in community engagement, part of the lease is 2 million in capital improvements over the next 10 years. The, the only issues, we're talking about a few different things, where, where one is, well, how can, how can we get property taxes reduced from this, and this is straight dollars going into service? And, that's, it's not captured in, in the current format, that, that this would function as a way to reduce taxes. I can see how that that's brought up now. You could, you could see, well, all this money's going toward services, why couldn't it just go to knock down taxes? But it's, because it's a nonprofit, profit service, it has a different function, and I would, I would still like some time to kind of evaluate the lease as it's written, see if there's a way to, at least contain these, these service numbers. I'm not sure what, what we could really do with this to get more, to get more tax base out of North House, being a nonprofit, but I, I think it's worth looking into still. So, that, and for me, that would just take a little bit more time, but this, these numbers are what, what I asked for, and thanks for that.
Okay, do you guys have any closing comments or anything like that? So, well, we thank you very much for bringing the information that we asked for. It seems like the, the council is requesting more time to go over this information, and, and then to proceed, to proceed at a, at a later date, so, I think that probably means, correct me if I'm mis, if I'm, you know, mischaracterizing this, but that means that, that we'll be in touch.
Well, and it doesn't mean that it won't be talked about, I think you guys all know me, I said here a couple of meetings ago, I'd like to talk about old business stuff, have that on. This would fall under that category. You now have something in our packets for us, talking about things that are kind of on the table, so it's not that we can't have conversations going forward at meetings about what are you hearing, what are people coming up with, as to how we develop that, and then come back, so, I threw out a number again, it's really hard sometimes to figure out, but I think we can, we can have ongoing conversations, and then contact you and say, hey, this is, we're, we're ready to move forward, or we have some thoughts, can we have a discussion?
Yep, I think that makes sense.
I hope, I don't know what word to do.
I think that makes sense. I think that, you know, this has got to be a very thoughtful process, and there has to be a lot of information brought into it, both from the community and from, from the financial history of North House, and the financial history of the city. So, so I do agree with, I agree with that, with what you guys are saying, so.
You know, I do want to just say one thing, you know, and I'd like to say thanks to everybody for being here. You know, by advocating for North House, I'm not trying to run away from anything. Of course, we've got challenges as a community, we need to work together, be honest with each other. You know, I think the board, and the volunteers, and the donors, and the instructors, what do we want more than anything? You know, we would love to be an institution that Grand Marais is proud of. That means a lot of different things. And, you know, we can go there, and it's going to take some work. And I, I hope we've got a pretty good start. I like to think we do.
I think you do.
So, thanks a lot for tonight, and for, you know, the work that it takes to be a strong and forward-focused community. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, so, we're going to move on to the next thing on the agenda, so, if there's going to be an exodus, I say that we take a touch of a break here to kind of regroup, and then we can continue on the next item, agenda item.
Nobody else wants to hang out for the rest of the meeting? It's just getting good. Second reading of the zoning ordinance. Micro license protocols.
Yeah.
They're not very big, are they?
Looks like it's 16.
I think that door's been opened.
Yeah, the other thing to think about is how many kids are in class, right? They only got 30 kids in a straight class. I mean, I, and I, that's, that's, that stuff we just got for the first half of the year, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, that's my...
You know, that's my, I mean, that's what I told Greg last time, I don't know if he listened to the last meeting.
I agree, I think it was, it was great.
It's great that you're doing it right now, and we all think it's great that you're offering those things, but like, you're going to be gone, we're going to be gone, if it's a 50 by release, like, what do we have, what kind of metric do we set that carries along with it?
She's seriously going to sit back in the corner now? You're going to sit back in the corner now? That's her spot.
Thank you, guys.
I don't think the liquor licenses are going to be pretty controversial.
No?
I, I hope not.
It could be, I, I hope not, too.
You could have another 20 minutes of conversation on that. You know, there was a guy who asked me about that once, Fritz. He said that we, that he, he told me, it was right after I got elected, he said we should put in the $20,000 application to, to become a community that has a marijuana dispensary, or like a marijuana production facility? Because the city, or the state of Minnesota was only going to have like five of them, and they took applications, it was like the lottery system, or like, they, they took applications, the application was 20,000 bucks, and then that didn't even guarantee that you were going to get accepted as a, as a facility, but then you'd have to build the facility and provide it, and so that'd be millions of dollars, and, you know, marijuana sales in Minnesota have been like, for medical marijuana, so it's really not, it would have been a bad investment.
Do you lose thought about it, didn't take it, now people do, have to go all the way to Hibbing to find some.
Have they had one in Hibbing?
Yeah, they got one in Hibbs.
Well, there you go.
It probably don't have to be.
Tied up in just fear.
Superior. Yeah, I would agree.
And the difficulty of obtaining license, I heard, I talked something about that, it's really, really hard.
It is really hard. Okay, we're going to keep moving, because we, the rest of our stuff is pretty, is pretty straightforward. So, in our last meeting, you may have remembered, or you may have watched, that, that the Planning Commission report had ordinance 2018-2, which is the modified downtown water, core waterfront zone description, which basically has a few subtle changes in it to, to disallow lodging on the first floor, and to make it a conditional use. So it removes it from the permitted use and puts it in conditional use, our conversation last time said that this is a good first step, we have to continue thinking about ways that we can address this. This is our second reading of this ordinance, if we choose to approve it by motion at this meeting, then that will become active when it is signed.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-02.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
The Planning Commission will be continuing this conversation, it'll be on their agenda next week.
Great, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carries, wonderful. Next thing we have is liquor license renewals, so I think that quite a few of them.
So refresh handout.
I would make a motion to approve the liquor licenses.
Okay, he's got a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
They're all in.
Nice.
Great.
That's great.
Looked more complete.
Yeah.
That sounds, yeah, much better. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carries, at least we're not going to have a dry city.
Not even close.
Not even close. All right, so moving on to council staff reports, Mr. Moody, you are up for a report.
Yeah, EDA meeting, I guess the same day that was, I think, is the day I had the open house at the properties over on Second Street, the one roof housing, and I believe all four of those houses have sold.
That's what I heard.
And the, by now, it's possible two of them have closed, they were waiting on closings, I think, on all of them, so, anyway, it was, at that point, it was like two weeks to a month to get the closings through, but that's pretty awesome, that at worst did not come true, that nobody would buy them or be able to afford them, and if they were able to meet the requirements to, for the, for the funding on those, and it went through, so, so that's cool. And I, apparently, the buildings for Lutzen are being made, and now, at this point, are probably close to being on their way over. So that, they're still planning on, I think, late October, being done and letting people move in at the Lutzen project.
Wow.
So after a bit of a slow start there, that's gone, quick, or is going quicker. And we had some conversation on business subsidies, being the Economic Development Authority, we are oftentimes approached with requests for funding from people that are trying to start a business up here, or grow a business up here. So we, we just are, been going through and updating and trying to make as fresh and accurate as possible our, our criteria for how we distribute money to, to businesses that come, or individuals that come, and I think made good steps in that. So, anyway, that was, it seems like so long ago now. I'll probably think of something else once Jonathan starts talking.
There you go, perfect. That's our, that's our way.
Dave Scott, so.
Yeah, got to remember him somehow. Okay, go ahead.
I was out in the Boundary Waters all last week, so that's.
In the main?
Cold rain.
Yeah, it was cold rain.
It was sunny one, one day. Tomorrow, I'm going to meet up with Dave Tierstake, CJ Hernandez, and do a kind of pre-design meeting for the rec park sign, the entrance sign in the Community Connection Corner, and that's just a pre-design meeting tomorrow. Hopefully, some more park board members will make it, but it's kind of last minute. And then, the following Thursday next week is going to be more of a flushed out review of that, where we can kind of get into some, just kind of see what design specs we're looking at, and maybe get into some budgeting, things like that.
Cool.
So that'll be fun, seeing some of that start take shape, so, that's it.
Cool.
Did the YMCA board meeting on September 17th? Every year, they, our YMCA sets out to raise 40,000 a year, because that's what they give in scholarships, so they set out to, I don't like using the word solicit, but they do fundraising drives, they reach out to people, they sell banners, obviously, they have dance recitals, they have the International Volleyball Tournament, different fundraisers, they are, at this point through August, 24,000 has been raised to the 40, so they are very upbeat about that, and we said that that's a really good place for them to be at.
Where are they at?
24,000.
I thought you said 4,000.
No, 24, sorry.
That's different.
Very different. Those scholarships, those scholarships are used for kids to go to like, kids camp in the summer, after school, events that they might take part of, those are the highest users of that scholarship money, that's basically what it's used for. October 18th, that our next meeting will be, and I am on the finance side of it, that will be our finance committee update where we're at, I.
Don't miss that meeting.
I am getting my feet really wet in all of this now, I kind of feel, so I'm really going to pay great attention to that, and then we'll bring it back on the 31st to share with all of you, because I believe that, that's something that we need to really have an understanding of as well, as we move forward. So that's where I'm at with what I'm in. Couple of things that I wanted to follow up on, that I've been thinking about, I like that we got the library minutes in our packet, I'm wondering if it's possible, not only for ourselves, I know that we do updates here, but if, and with all that the community and people want to know, if it's possible to have like park board minutes in the packet, different committees that we attend, if they're EDA minutes, can they, we don't have to do anything with them, I know the county board even has that, that it's included in packets, so that we just have that for information, is that possible?
Yeah, we put them in the packet when they're submitted to us, so we can just do a little more shaking of trees.
And just let them know, I mean, it's something that can grow in time, I'm not saying next meeting I expect all these, and obviously, they aren't going to always be in the first packet, depending upon when meetings fall.
Right.
But as people would do that, I think especially as people are reaching and trying to seek information, that's a great way to have it available to them, and that we're then having the opportunity to read things and understand. The last thing I had a question on was, back in July, we had our big discussion about trailers in yards. My memory was that we were going to try to send out a letter to people, explaining what the ordinance was, and asking them to please follow. As I drive around, I still see trailers, so I don't know if they, did we do that?
No, and that, that's not what I understood you asked for, but honestly, I don't know, because I wasn't at that meeting, but.
Okay. Probably, I can go back and look, I can go back and definitely look at the meeting.
I mean, let's talk about this now, are you asking for us to identify all of the potential violators and send them a letter, is that what you want us to do, because we can do that?
Yes.
Yeah?
I think it makes sense.
I, I thought that's what we talked about, I, I know time is of the essence, but some of the things that people have actually talked to me about are the fact that we're not following our ordinances. As it becomes an issue with how do we spend employee time, that is going to involve further discussion, that I understand, but as people are asking about this, and it's very, that was probably one of the top things that was important, I know Jonathan kind of did his bike tour to see, things may be changing now because of the time of year that people move things away, but it's also a good time to remind them, so that maybe come next June, it's not as much of an issue, so I just, we can revisit that, look at the tape, whatever, but, or, yes, sending the letter, we have to identify.
We're here now, and we'll keep track of the effort involved, just so that we can inform that part of the conversation. And this step, it's not as simple as just a quick tour around town. But it's not, it's the next steps that get extremely onerous, so.
Yep, and that'll be discussions with Chris as we move forward, because I have had people contact me, and I'm sure some of you hear it, about what actually is our ordinance on junk yards, and that we, they ask that we start addressing some of those things, so I know that we don't have time to cover everything at every meeting, but as some people are bringing up things that are really important to them, then I think we need to take a look at some of those things, and try to address it, and move through the steps to at least show that we're making the effort. We're going to hit roadblocks, but again, if we work through them.
That's another topic that.
Yep.
Comes up three to four years, every three to four years, for a kind of a serious look back at, and there's no reason you can't prioritize it to be a topic that you want to spend time on.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's not hard for us to prepare for it, because we've done it a few times.
Yeah.
And I agree, someday that somebody's going to decide to make some changes about it, that hasn't happened yet, but, if the day's coming when we're going to handle that differently, then we'll get it back.
Yeah, so I just, I kind of want to address some of the things that people do come to me with, that I, I see value in, and those are two things that I think kind of speak to our city community, that do change value, change property values, especially if your neighbor next door has a really horrible yard, I know what that can do to people. So I think as we're talking about taxpayers, that's something of importance, so that's all I have, thank you for listening to me.
Can I throw in there, based on that too, like what their conversation was about, about the parking, and then maybe meeting with Pat?
Yeah.
And do we have any, is he going to be at the Joint Powers?
I hope so, I don't know if that's the right venue for that conversation.
Maybe not.
But we will, we'll still have that conversation.
And that seems like if, especially if we're going to try and do some sort of odd even thing come winter time, I mean, that's, I guess, one of the feedbacks I got was about actually my street, but, you know, again, narrowing of the street, like up by Lutheran Church on a Sunday, you got a block and a half, or you got to thread the needle, because you can't have oncoming traffic.
Right.
And, and then, of course, now the safe routes thing, which is great, but I don't know, how, what do we know, that's a county road, obviously, that, where those got put in, the cones, but like.
They're, those, my understand, what I've heard is they're temporary, those pylons are going to be coming out the paint stays?
Yeah.
But the pylons will be removed?
But that, that was one thing that I, that I got, just nobody brought up to me just this last weekend, was, you know, and they were, I was thinking that we had originally talked about maybe odd even for like, during the snow route time, but they were bringing up the idea of odd even just all the time, for the sake of, you know.
Consistency.
Consistency, and the.
Habits.
And the, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't know, I know at some point, again, we brought up parking, but then.
Yeah, so we've met with folks at the highway department to just start that conversation, and they had some things, some steps that they were going to take, that would get us through to October before we were going to continue that conversation, so I don't think that you should expect us to come to the next meeting with that, maybe not in October at all, but I think one of the things we decided right away was, that this isn't something that we can just get done before it snows this year, so rather than rush through, we're just going to take the time it takes. And we focused at that meeting kind of on, well, what I wanted to focus on anyway was, let's make sure we've actually identified the problem we're trying to solve here, because we're starting this conversation with a whole lot of solutions, and we haven't necessarily said what the issue is, so, and we should agree on that, I think, before we go too far down the road, and, and we did agree on a few things about what the issues are, so when we circle back around and come to the table with Pat, and with, you know, County Attorney's Office, and the Highway Department, and every, all the players that would need to be involved in this conversation, we're going to be able to tell the story, starting from that, here's what we think the issue is, and here's some of the ideas we have about taking care of it.
I just, yeah, I wanted to make sure it was moving, that there was, it wasn't just brought up and that was it, that's all, that's great, it's good to know it.
And I've been, every time I see Pat just about, I threaten that we have to sit down and have a conversation about this, so I'll actually take him up on that.
Is that a threat?
I would say, are threats empty, empty threats?
Offer.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a wide open offer. Okay, I have just a, just weird smattering of things, as far as, as far as meetings are concerned, the library board met on Monday, we discussed, let me just say, oh, that's not it, right there, I'll have to do it from memory, I had it, but I lost it.
Well, they'll see the minutes next month.
Thank you.
Wrap it up.
Yeah, wrap it up. The director's report had, just basically said that, that there are tons and tons and tons of, of good things happening at the library, and they're going to get a little bit of, of maintenance work done on the outside exterior of the library, to improve the weather proofness of it, and its resilience against water infiltration, as well as they're going to be building a lactation space on the inside, at the, like, inside the library, so that nursing mothers can have a space that is a private little space for them to, to do so. The Friends of the Library, what was that?
And an office for the assistant director.
And an office for the assistant director.
Assistant director.
Yep. The Library Friends reported that, that they're, they're really out of crux, like they're really at a, at a shifting point for what the Friends of the Library looks like, since they can't find storage space for the books, for the book sale, they really need to figure out what their mission is, and what they're, what they're actually called to do as Friends of the Library. So I would encourage anyone who knows of storage space that these guys could use, that the Friends could use for their, for book donations, it has to be dry and, and somewhat heated, so that they can go and, and sort the books, and accessible, you know, at any time, basically, because that's when they have the volunteers go and do the sorting.
And cheap.
And cheap, or free.
Free.
And relatively large. So, so that's, um, those are the considerations that they need.
Difficult.
Yes.
Is that a year-round thing, then, that they collect books?
Yeah, they usually do, yeah. And I have a feeling that if they do find a space, and it's a space that can work well for them, that there's going to be a pent-up bunch of books that are just going to come flowing in, when they, you know, if they start collecting again, so I'm really hoping that we can find that space for them.
Put this in perspective, if you've never been to the book sale, that the community center is pretty much full of tables covered with books for their one sale, so you can package that into boxes and stuff it into some spaces, but it's a whole heck of a lot of space.
They say that they have anywhere from 50,000 to 75,000 books for the book sale every year, so, thank you to the. So thank you to the Friends of the Library and to the volunteers. Strategic plan for the library is looking really good. We're nearing the end of that strategic plan. We should be looking to do another strategic plan in the next year or two. I went to a meeting for the climate action plan. Mike was there as well. They were talking about strategies and, and tactics that could be written into the, into the plan that would get us to the, the climate goals that we, that we have. And some of those are, have to do with electricity, like the electricity that we use. If we get, if we can source our electricity for the city from renewable sources, that takes care of 65% of what we had committed to do. Another 35% or something in that neighborhood, no, it was 20%, another 20% has to do with, with trans, or no, with, with, that's with the efficiency, energy efficiency in homes. 14% was transportation. The remainder was garbage. So, so there's, there's a lot of work to do on that front and a lot of ideas, any ideas that could possibly, you know, be thrown out, we're looking for. I also went to the open house for the, for the Nordic Star Development. Cute little houses, really great. And the other houses that are farther up there are starting to be delivered now. So, you know.
Is that what's up at Tom Devota property?
Yeah.
I was like, hey!
One of them's already on site, two of them are up there. There's one more that they're waiting on. So, and then when they get the fourth one here, they'll get the crane up there, they'll lift them and put them on the, put them on the.
I thought maybe it was your new city office.
Yeah, that'd be sweet.
It might be, who knows?
I went to the community fund event tonight. A lot of, they're doing a lot of good stuff in the community. Last night I went to the community, thank you for Sandy Stover, who is moving down to Duluth to be teaching, which is going to be, she's going to be fantastic at that. I received a report from Rod Wanaboo, Wanaboo, who, with the tennis association, saying how much they appreciated the work on the tennis courts and how much it's enabled them to do. So that's, so that's been, that was good to hear from him. And I've been getting some phone calls from, from people around town saying that they've